Good morning. This is the regular meeting of the Athens County Regional Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, April 8th, 2021. I will call the meeting to order with at least nine members present. I have a membership of myself, Warren Jeffers, Mayor Gary Guzman, Arian Smedley, Township Trustees Steve Pearson, Mayor Steve Patterson, Commissioner Lenny Eliasen, Jack Pepper, and Greg Andrews. So we have at least a quorum of nine have been established. There may be a few people on here who are signed in under my Zoom link. So if you can, if it's possible, if you're not driving, or if you're not, if you're in a safe situation, please change your name from Paul Logue to whoever you may be. With that being said, we will call the meeting to order. And the first item on our agenda this morning is the determination of quorum and call to order that has been maintained. And the second item is the approval of minutes from March 19th, 2021. Steve, just so you're aware, I did, I sent you an email about half hour ago. I noticed that the details of the minutes say that the meeting was on March 11th, which we had moved it to the 19th. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
With the correction of the minute date to the 19th, I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Gary Guzman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The minutes have been approved. The next item on the agenda is swearing in of any guests wishing to speak. Don't believe we have any on our agenda this morning. And any public comments before we begin? Great. Okay. Any announcements and updates this morning? Okay. Next item, any new business? There's no new business. All right. Next item is old business. The first item is a rezoning subcommittee report for the Athens Township Zoning Commission. Let's see, we had, we, at our last meeting, we did appoint a rezoning subcommittee to assist with this. The members of that subcommittee include myself, Warren Jeffers, Mayor Steve Patterson, and County Commissioner Charlie Atkins. We had a meeting this Monday that just passed. Three members were present, me, Warren, and Mayor Patterson, to review this item. For anyone, I know everybody received the materials, but very quickly here, I'd like to share my screen so you're all aware of where this item is or where this topic is. We've got, let's see. The request is for a rezoning of a parcel in Athens Township in the Plains. And it's this piece of land right here at...
Can anyone else not hear Paul speaking?
Oh, we lost your voice.
Yep.
I don't think he can hear us either.
Thanks. Good morning. We did vote 3-0 to recommend to the Athens County Regional Planning Commission that, as well as to recommend to the Plains zoning committee, that we thought a rezoning from R1 to R3 was an acceptable change here.
I'll just let you know, I don't know if you caught that, but we lost you for a bit there.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. We, the, let me, I'll just backtrack there. So the move, the request from the applicant was to rezone that area from R1 up to R3. So that would be from single-family residential to multi-unit residential. The property owner has had in the past some discussions about doing a multi-unit development at that location. And while we discussed it, we, we did not feel that the, the, the change was a significant change. We thought it was okay to re, to do that rezoning. So we, the three of us made a, our recommendation to the Regional Planning Commission would be to allow for that or support that rezoning to, to proceed from R1 to multi-unit R3, and make a recommendation to the Plains Zoning Committee. Warren or Mayor Patterson, is there anything I'm missing from that conversation?
No, no, I think you captured it all, Paul.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about it? Okay. So Steve Pearson, if you don't mind, if you can correct me, but my understanding is that our, the, we had the subcommittee and then the Regional Planning Commission as a body should vote to, and then what we're doing is recommending to the Plains. Is that correct? You're on mute, Steve.
Excuse me. There we go. Yeah, the recommendation of the Regional Planning Commission will be incorporated into the public hearing next Wednesday, the 14th, that the zoning commission will hold. That public hearing starts at 5:30, and then their regular meeting, which this will be on the agenda, starts at 6:00. And as soon as they, they have done 30 days to make their recommendation to the township trustees within the 30-day period. And then, even though it seems a little odd to me, the trustees then approve it or recommend modification or deny it, one or the other, or one of the three. So, yep, that's the process.
Okay. So, so it's actually, there's, so we're recommending to a body that is also recommending to the body that will vote?
Exactly.
Okay.
If you can read, if you can read the mind of a legislator when they're writing this stuff, you send me a note.
Well, if, if there's a, does anybody have any additional discussion on it or questions? Okay. If not, I will make a motion to, that we recommend to the Plains zoning committee that this, that we, we would support a rezoning of that area from R1 to R3.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Was that Mayor Patterson on the second?
It was.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
All members in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any members opposed?
I'll have to recute naturally, so I'll put that in the record. Thank you.
Understood. Okay. The motion is approved then. Thank you, Steve. And moving on. Excuse me, it looks like I jumped the, jumped the agenda there. The first item from old business is actually the rezoning subcommittee report. Now, that is what we just covered. Is this on here twice, Steve?
Um, I just got a recommendation. Recommendation, and then the actual, excuse me, the subcommittee report, and then the vote. That's two different items. That's how I split that up. In other words, there's first a report from the subcommittee, and then action taken by the full body. I kind of have that same thing, the way I've got it listed too. And the second thing for nomination, the nominating committee, and then actual nominations.
I wonder if Paul was dropped out again.
So much for our great broadband service that Spectrum Carter provides us.
Yep. Maybe we should create a broadband co-op. Hmm.
Can I hear everybody now?
Yes.
You're coming back.
My, my audio, for whatever it was worth, I was getting a message saying that I'd been, my audio had been shifted from my computer to my phone, but my phone is not connected to this call. So I don't know if somebody is using, used my link and it's, it's just getting confused, but whatever the case may be, sorry about that. So Steve, I did miss that discussion. Is there anything of note? Steve Pearson?
Uh, I may have gotten a little too technical there, but what I had, for example, was split up, you know, the committee, subcommittee report as one item, and then the actual motion and vote is something separate. You could have combined them, but...
I understand.
Same thing, same thing on the next for the nominating, and then the election of officers.
Okay, thanks, Steve. So if we can, we'll move on to the nominating committee report for nomination of commission, commission officers. We had three members on that committee that, that included me, Mayor Gary Guzman, and Commissioner Lenny Eliasen. The three of us did have, we met and discussed via email to make a, our recommendation at this point is to nominate the, renominate the current slate, which is myself as president, Tim Waren as vice president, and Steve Pearson as secretary.
I'll second that.
Okay. Well, do we, is there any discussion or comments from that? We did not receive any other nominations from any members interested in serving at this time? And are any members interested? I guess we can have one more discussion on that.
Anybody wants to jump in as a secretary?
Steve, you do an outstanding job. I'll tell you what, Zoom is so much easier. And I'm going to admit to you, once we quit meeting this way, it's going to be a little tough. My hearing's not the greatest. And if you recall meeting at the Health Department in that room upstairs, there's, the acoustics are terrible. So when we get back to that spot, I may have to pass my phone around as a boarder as each person speaks, because it's, that room is tough. And, and this getting old, I do not like it.
Luke, are you able to hear? I'm seeing a comment that you can't hear. Uh, so, Arian, did you make a motion to recommend that slate?
Yeah, I think I technically said second, but yeah, I may, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All members in favor? Any further discussion? All members in favor?
Aye.
Any members opposed? Okay. Motion's approved. You're all stuck with me for at least another year. Sorry about that. And the next item on our agenda is the continuing discussions. Any update on the US-50 corridor project? Lenny, are you present?
I'm still here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can now.
All right. I'm getting ready to go into a doctor's appointment, so I'm going to put my earphones on. That mutes out my mic. But the project phase five is out to bid. And construction is underway on the other phases. So we haven't had any real big problems here after we had our first construction meeting. So everything's proceeding according to plan.
Okay. Thank you, Lenny.
And while I got you, let me give you the update on the planner. Our planning candidate turned us down. So we're going back out to advertise the position again in some other journals and places to try and get some more candidates. So no update yet. We'll keep having to rely on Bob for a little while longer.
Hey, Lenny, I did have one question on the Route 50 sewer project. Clarification, it is still going forward that the Wi-Fi capability wiring is going to be also laid as they're going?
Uh, that was separate, and that was really up to the company to negotiate with the contractor to see if they could get it in for them.
Okay.
I haven't heard any update as to whether they did or did not. I haven't heard anything either way. So I will check and let you know.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Lenny.
Hey, Paul, can I add something on this too right now?
Yes.
As this project goes along, most of it is in Athens Township. And everyone, please be aware that there could be temporary road closures and detours that are occurring. I put out to the media the other day that right now for the, during the course of this week, the intersection of Urban Road and Stagecoach Road has been affected. So there will be road closures that, you know, I don't know any other way except to get it out to the media and maybe put it on our website that these closures are going to, but just be aware of that. You might come up against a, you know, a roadblock or a barricade or someone signaling, and it might make it a little tougher to get to work that day. Just be aware of that.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, next item is electric aggregation.
Yeah, two things to report today. One is we received word from USDA that our, we need a grant or renewable energy development assistance grant will be renewed for next year. The exciting part about that, we've been serving 18 counties with that program, helping folks get solar assessments on small farms and businesses. That's going statewide. So we'll be able to serve any rural eligible community in the whole state of Ohio. So that's pretty exciting. Secondly, we're always growing. We're up to 19 communities across seven counties at this point. There are only two eligible communities remaining in Athens County that have not joined, that being Nelsonville and Coolville. The filing deadline in or outside Athens County. So if you have friends and colleagues that would like to join us beyond those boundaries, that deadline is August 4th.
Thanks, Luke. Unless there's anything else on electric aggregation, we can move on to Athens County Land Bank. Chris, are you present? You're on mute if you are.
Can you hear me?
I can now. Yes, Chris.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, we're getting ready to tear down two new properties in Chansey and two in Nelsonville. We're also working with this Buster program, which helps eliminate old underground gas storage facilities. And that's also going to happen in the Village of Chansey at 16 Main Street. We've got an updated website with all the listings of our properties. So please direct people to that. And we're getting close to having an annual report done. So, so more of the same. That's all.
Thank you, Chris. Any additional questions or comments on that item? Okay, we can move on to the COVID-19 health emergency. Jack, are you on the call still?
Yep, sure am. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
So we've, we, you know, continue to really push hard to get vaccine. We're given a nice allocation last week and this week specifically for the student population on the Athens campus. So working through some of the logistics of that, I, I anticipate that we will get a visit from the governor sometime in the next, the next few days or week. More to come on that. I don't, I don't know if it's been publicly announced yet, but, but he definitely is going to be around our clinic site sometime soon. So that's exciting. We are working through a partnership right now with Ohio Health and Ohio University and, and using eligible people that they have to do some vaccinating at our clinics for us. So that's been an interesting transition this week. We just, my staff is being pulled in some different directions. And some of the vaccinators that we have been using are doing other things. So we had to sort of dip into the bucket and, and we're working through some of those, those details. I, I do want to make sure that, that, that folks know that we need to remain vigilant in, in this, in, in our disease response. I, I know that it's exciting to have a vaccine. I know that it's exciting to see some loosening of restrictions. I know that it's exciting with the nice weather. All of those things are great. And there's lots of reasons to be optimistic. But I, I think that we need to be very careful not to transition too quickly away from some of those public health protocols that we've been following for the, over the course of the last year. We are starting to see an uptick in cases again. We are starting to see more and more presence of disease variants in the state. And I, I think that we are far from finished in managing the pandemic. I, I don't know what the long term looks like. You know, this could be a disease that we just learned to manage and live with, and that there will always be some sort of small background level of cases. We just don't know that yet. But I, I, I think that we are very optimistic here, because Lord knows, we could use a break. But the reality is, is that I just am not entirely sure that we're at that point yet. So I just want to encourage everybody to continue to mask up and maintain that social distancing and get your vaccine if you haven't gotten it, and encourage those that aren't getting it to get it. So that's the report.
Thanks, Jack. Jack, I had a question. Those, I've been curious about, uh, will, when or will there be a vaccine? Do you expect anything for, for children?
Yeah. So I think that that is coming. Pfizer, I know, did some trials on 12 to 15-year-olds and had some really great success with that. I, I don't know, and I would be, it would be foolish of me to speculate on when that is coming, because I just am not, you know, I'm not a bio, you know, I just am not a disease or a vaccine developer and have no idea as to what that timeline looks like. I, I do know that Pfizer has moved into their broaden or expanded trial period, which means that, you know, sooner than later for that 12 to 15 age group, there could be something available. And I certainly anticipate that by fall of, of next school year, we could be doing something similar to what we did with the H1A, N1 pandemic, where we're actually going into the schools and delivering vaccine for those that want it in the school, in the school setting. But, you know, I'm hopeful, fingers crossed, that that comes sooner than the fall. But I, I think realistically, that's a reasonable timeline.
And it looks like the governor's orders probably won't be changing too much. Am I correct on that? I know yesterday we had cases at about 2,000 for the, for the state.
Yeah. So, so I don't know if you all noticed, but, but last week he did rescind all of the previous orders and, and published or, excuse me, signed one single order that consolidated all of the previous orders. The state is moving towards a, a 10-6-1 sort of moniker. So groups of 10 or less, six feet apart, one mask for everybody. So, so they were getting just inundated with, hey, can we do parades? Hey, what about Little League Baseball? Hey, what about graduations, et cetera? And I mean, they just were spinning their wheels, trying to issue guidance for all of them. So they really have sort of simplified the order to some extent. There are some capacity limits still tied to indoor facilities, but outdoor events and outdoor areas, they're, they're pushing that 10-6-1 moniker, meaning that, you know, if your family unit is six people, that's fine, you know, stay in that group of six, stay six feet away from other groups, and everybody in the group should be masking. So, so that's, that's the new sort of really skinny down version of what they're trying to push out of ODH. And, and bear in mind that Senate Bill 22 did pass. It was passed by the legislature. It was, it was vetoed by the governor and then overridden, which 90 days from, from the, the override vote goes into effect, which is around June 1st. And I, I have no idea what the legislature will move to do at that point. They, they in theory could vote on that day to, to remove, you know, any and all orders issued by the governor and the Ohio Department of Health that, that, you know, are, are, any restrictions tied to the pandemic. So we'll see what happens.
Any members have any questions or comments? I get my second shot a week from today, and I can't wait. I will say that. Moving on. Next item is the planners' report.
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me, Paul? Um, I'll just give a brief update on some of our ongoing projects. The Geysville canoe access is proceeding. We have to get a nationwide permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. So that's in process. And because that stretch of river actually has some fairly decent warm water habitat numbers associated with it, we may have to do a little bit with the Ohio EPA. And that shouldn't be a problem because the project scope is so small. It's just a time issue, and that really won't be a problem either because we're, we're on this early in the year. So that's moving forward. The Chansey Bike Path Spur project has hit a couple snags that everybody should be aware of. Due to the soil instability in that area and some changes to engineering plans, the costs have gone up significantly. And on top of that, ODOT reminded the county that we are responsible for construction engineering, which is basically oversight while construction happens. And we're talking many hundreds of thousands of dollars of increase, which is quite a curveball. Most of that coming to the county because the project has a, a grant cap from the Federal Highway Administration of $1.5 million. Alan Craig at ODOT informed me that there may be a way to get a little more money from the TAP program to help with this. But I think the commissioners are hopeful, I mean, they're going to look at alternative ways to fund this, but they're hopeful that the stimulus money is eligible for this type of project because that's, that's about the only opportunity they have for this, the type of dollars we're talking about. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars extra. So that's in the works. And then the only other update, Paul, is the Beaumont restroom project. The grant was submitted. And because of its scale, and it isn't even involved in any kind of waterway, that, that already is receiving environmental... uh, that, that already is receiving environmental approvals to move forward. So we'll just hope we get that grant money. And we'll hear something about that late summer, early fall. That's all I have.
Bob, I have a question on the, the Chancy Bike Path. Is this instability area mainly in areas that continue to flood easily closer to the river maybe?
My understanding is there, there are two issues, Warren. Um, one is the sub soils are fairly poor through there for holding up even, even a bike path. So, uh, they had, after their geotechnical report came out, they had to, uh, reevaluate those soils and they have to do a significant more excavation of those, they call them sub soils, um, and replace those with better material. Um, so that was one issue and that, that is a significant portion between Chancy and the river. Uh, as you get close, closer to the river, it's more of an erosion concern because to get up to that bridge, you have fairly steep slopes on the bike path. And those slopes, uh, initially were supposed to be, uh, designed with reinforced type soils and geotextile, but because they're so steep, uh, ODOT is saying that really those need to be reinforced with a retaining wall because they're steep enough that, um, it, it really calls for a retaining wall. So those two things together, um, you know, are adding to the cost.
Okay.
Additional questions or comments?
Um, I have a question for Bob. Bob, what was the, what was the timeline supposed to be on this?
Uh, the construction timeline?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, ODOT has it down right now as the last quarter of fiscal year 22, which is state fiscal year 22, and that would be, um, March, April and May of next year. So, and, and that would be, that, that would be for advertising. The, the construction would then happen, you know, during construction season next year. And, and I should let everybody know too, phase two is being administered by ODNR. That's the part that will go from 682 back to the Bailey's system. And, um, they're, they're moving forward with that, but because so many trees need to be removed, um, they didn't really hit the deadline. Uh, that's going to have to be done by a contractor. The, the deadline for removing those trees is between, um, October 1st and April 1st in the winter time. And if you don't have those trees down, uh, you have to jump through a million hoops, um, to try to get them removed the other time of the year. So they're just going to wait until October 1st, uh, to get going on that project.
We ran on that, ran into that in Athens with the Northwest Bike Path Spur with bats, um, you know, making sure, we only had certain times to take, to drop the trees. Um, you may have already mentioned this. Can you give me a kind of even a ballpark of the cost overrun for retaining wall?
Well, they, I, I can't, I can't say specifically, uh, the retaining wall. There were several items mixed up in there, Mayor, but it's, it's in the neighborhood of $250,000 uh, of unanticipated costs because of this. And then, um, everyone should just be aware that the, the construction administration or construction engineering, uh, that's $126,000. And Commissioner Atkins was asking if we couldn't just do that locally. And while it's, it's tempting when you're looking at that kind of dollar amount, um, trying to do it locally would also be very complicated, uh, both administratively and probably wouldn't be that much cheaper when you came right down to it. Um, so my recommendation would not be to go that route. And Alan Craig from ODOT also kind of reiterated that. So we'll hope that some alternative funding can come available because, uh, you know, it's an important project, obviously. At the same time, everybody understands that when you're looking at, you know, an additional $400,000 out of the county pocket for that, that's a sizable chunk.
Wonder if there's an opportunity for state-level ARPA being used, depending on the guidelines?
Well, the commissioners will be open to all kinds of suggestions. And I'll get with Alan Craig and ask if we need to be working right now on procuring additional cap money. I don't know what's involved, but it, it was capped initially. Um, but it, if, if any project is eligible, it seems this one should be.
Laura, do you have anything to add or any comments?
I've covered it. Um, the only other update that I would include is that making sure everybody is aware that our office location has changed. So we are no longer located above the Health Department. We are now located on the first floor of the courthouse. So anybody needs us, send them up here instead.
Have phone numbers changed as well?
Phone number's the same. Everything else is the same, just the location.
Anything else for the planners? If not, we can move on to city, village, township and organizational reports. Uh, and I'll just start going kind of clockwise as best I can across my screen. So we can start with Mayor Guzman in Amesville.
Um, pretty much the same. People are getting excited about warm weather and being outside. The only thing I'll add is that, um, the age-friendly Athens County group is closing in on a, a survey that'll be ready to be released and go out to the community. And, uh, that group will be looking for help in promoting the survey. One version will be online, but there's the realization that not everybody is, has computer access or is computer literate. So there'll be hard copies that will be sent out to various communities to senior centers or, or other facilities where they'll be asked to spread those around and, uh, get input. So the greater amount of input we get for this, the better the planning process will go in terms of ideas for creating age-friendly Athens County through the, uh, AARP and WHO. So.
Uh, next on my screen is, uh, Mayor Samantha Sikorsky up in Gloucester.
Hello. I don't really have much to report. We did open a new laundromat in town, but other than that, nothing new going on.
Thanks, Sam. Uh, Mayor Steve Patterson.
Thanks, Paul. Um, Stimson Avenue Project, um, is barreling along. The reason I'm bringing that one up in particular is our businesses on Stimson are open. So please frequent them, the pharmacy, China, China Fortune, Belovino, yada, yada. I think you guys know, know the routine. Uh, they are struggling. There's no doubt about that. Uh, and it's kind of been compounded certainly with the construction, but then the pandemic as well. Uh, I, I really appreciate Jack Pepper's report out. Uh, Jack, thank you for the detail. I'll keep it simple. Wear a mask. Uh, stay safe. Uh, but, but Jack and the Athens City County Health Department, thank you for all the work that you have been doing and continue to do, especially with the ramp up of, uh, Ohio University students being vaccinated with J and J. Uh, that's wonderful. Um, Mayor's Partnership for Progress is meeting this afternoon at, uh, well, at noon today. Um, other than that, uh, I don't think there's a whole lot more that I have to report out. There is a letter of support that has come through the executive director for ORCA, Jesse Powers. We'll see how it goes. It's to, to Congressman Stivers to see about earmark for the Bailey Trail System. I, I have my own reservations about that, although I will be writing, uh, signing on to this, um, uh, form letter to send on to the congressman in support of getting more funding for the Bailey. Uh, and I can share that with anyone who wants it. Just email me. I will send it your way if you're interested. And also signing on, change the language in it because it speaks to board of directors or board members, but you can easily change that and send that in yourself. So I'd encourage you, if you feel that the Bailey is important to, to do so. Other than that, uh, I don't have anything else, Paul.
Not my dog this time. Uh, Steve Pearson, Athens Township.
Yeah, sorry, I had to turn my microphone on. Um, we're almost done with the engineering part of the Elm Street project, which is a connector from State Route 682 to the high school grounds. This is, uh, something too that hopefully, uh, ODOT can incorporate into the median closure. Um, we did, we have paid for those, uh, engineering costs up to this point. And, um, the project will go out to bid, um, in the winter time. And hopefully next spring be under construction. They can arrange that from, you know, between when school's out and do it in the summertime. Um, it includes a bike lane. It's essentially a complete streets project. Um, new pavement, curb and gutter. Bike lane. So, uh, and this project too was started before the latest discussions about the median closure. So it was kind of interesting at the public hearing that ODOT said that all they were going to do is put a crosswalk in across 682 to get you from that side of 682 with the school over to, you know, the shopping center. Um, they really didn't think that any kind of a flashing light or even a signal was warranted. So again, I think that's something that's consistent with the letters, both the trustees and the commission sent to ODOT, that we'd like to see some more impact study after the median closes, um, before the right-hand turn on Johnson Road is eliminated. Um, let's see, we did, the trustees issued a curb cut, um, last week to the housing project called Tyler Park. It's out off Lurid Road and 682, right in the corner there, 67 unit apartment complex. It's going through, I believe, the Title 41 review process right now with the city. Um, so there'll be, you know, city oversight over that. It's a recent annexation. Um, and last week we did have a discussion between the Health Department, the trustees, the sheriff's office and the prosecutor's office concerning enforcement of the zoning code, um, on the plains. And an interesting outcome from that was a discussion that's been going on about having an environmental court. Um, the Health Department's interested in that. Of course you have an environmental officer that, you know, has been on and off, but mostly on at the Sheriff's Department too. So we have three different agencies there looking to fund a position that, um, you know, we all have in common. So hopefully something will come out of that. It'll be a cooperative, um, between the Health Department, the trustees, um, and the sheriff's office. Yeah, that's all I have.
Steve?
Steve, along with, with, uh, you talked briefly and I missed some of it. I apologize for the dogs barking. Um, you had mentioned the letter and things that went to the ODOT. And, and I feel that the letter that the group sent was, was excellent in form and, and the, the way that it followed with what, uh, Engineer Maiden's letter had recommended. And I wonder if maybe we could also, maybe shouldn't be sending that to the A-News and the Athens Messenger to get published.
Paul, you and I, you and I could send both of them to them to, to look at them. They're very, yeah, you know.
Cause I feel that's the only way we're getting the message out to the state is through publication and, and the airways.
Mm-hmm. I forwarded this morning to everybody. I did receive response from, uh, District 10. I sent that out at about probably quarter after seven this morning. Um, thanking us for the, you know, thanking us for our concerns, et cetera, and, um, a few comments about work that they've done. So.
Yeah, that's, that's their canned letter they're sending out.
Or less, probably. Yeah. Yeah. Does anybody on the Regional Planning Commission have any concerns or reservations about us sending, um, forwarding that to the media? Okay. All right. Yeah. It's a good idea, Warren. We can send that. I'll send it out.
And probably wouldn't hurt for the Athens Township trustees to send their letter as well.
Yep. Paul and I worked together on, um, putting that together. That's why they look so similar, but it was meant to reflect the idea that we agreed with each other and we agreed with our county here. So all three of those entities saying, almost saying exactly the same thing. Um, so the release to the media, probably Paul, we'll just get together and how, how we want to do, you know, who we want to send that to, determine it and send them both at the same time. Sound good?
Yeah, of course. Okay. Thanks, Steve. Uh, Greg Andrews, do you have anything this morning from Waterloo?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, in the township, we're putting up an effort into, uh, litter cleanup, dumps, those kind of things. We had the, uh, Alexander High School, uh, interact club out a couple of weeks ago and did a lot of cleanup. We actually have a litter pickup scheduled for Saturday for the, uh, the Village of New Marshfield. And we're having an impact. It's, it's looking better. Got a ways to go, of course. Uh, our chip and seal program, we're, we accepted bits for the emollient last night and we have our gravel stockpile. So we'll be starting that first of June. Our tree removal, um, is ongoing for trees that are, pose a hazard that are in the right of ways. We, uh, accepted prices of, uh, I think six trees, which doesn't sound that impressive, but it's, you know, it's, it's important that we keep after that. So we'll be getting those trees down. Um, I think that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, Tim Warran, do you have anything from York?
Not much. We're just gearing up, getting ready to start patching holes. I, I saw that the, uh, blacktop plant must be open this morning. So, uh, we'll be patching holes. That's about it for us.
Tim, I think you were late to the meeting, but you're, 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 you're still vice president.
Why? Thank you.
Uh, Ariel, Sutcliffe, do you have anything this morning?
I do have a couple of things. Um, as I've reported over the course of, um, these meetings, you know, our agency, County Board of DD is partially in person, mostly working remotely, aside from our school program. Will remain that way until August. Um, the plan at the moment, um, assuming, uh, things get worse, will be all in person, uh, in, in late August at the start of the new school year. Um, so that'll be our plan. We'll of course continue to monitor things and stay and, and, um, keep abreast of the updates from the Health Department. Um, the County Board of DD will be entering in its, um, next strategic planning phase. So if any of you have any feedback for what the County Board of DD does, any suggestions for improvement, we will be sending out a link to our stakeholder survey on April 21st. So keep an eye out for that if you'd like to contribute. Um, we're planning for graduations for Beacon, um, and keeping everything that Jack mentioned already in mind when we do that. Um, uh, so that'll be exciting. Um, I also wanted to share, I know this isn't exactly, uh, all connected to what you guys do, but we do have a number of job openings and I wanted to share it with you all in case you know people who are looking for jobs. Um, we're going to be running a summer camp, hopefully at Beacon for students with, with, within our school. And the structure of that camp really will depend on how many people we get to apply for the jobs. Um, so if you know anyone who's looking for a summer position, um, there's details about all these jobs I'm going to mention on our website. Um, we also have a job trainer position open. It is part-time benefits eligible, uh, and that position just helps people with disabilities. And that position just helps people with disabilities be successful in their jobs. So if you know anyone looking for that kind of work, let us know. And more positions with our school, we have a teacher position open and we are always, always, always looking for substitute drivers, substitute teachers and substitute aides. So if you know anyone looking, please share a link from our website. And if you have any questions, yeah. That was it.
Thank you, Karen. Glenn?
Morning, Glenn. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me. It's been a very long time since I've joined this call. So Paul, thanks for having me back. Hapcap's been extremely busy. We've had just a crazy year as has, as have everyone here, I'm sure. We have been working with the village of Trimble to demolish structures in the floodplain up here, which is funded through FEMA. Kind of in conjunction with continued demolitions through the land bank. So we're really having an impact in Trimble Township. Through not only the land bank program, but FEMA funded monies through the village of Trimble. So that's been awesome to help address a seriously blighted area and one that reoccurring floods and whatnot. So that's been great. We're also with, as far as CDBG, we're also working, be working, investing a lot in Gloucester this coming season. We're currently for, for the recently acquired CDBG neighborhood revitalization grant, we will be seeking professional design. So we'll be putting out an RFQ on behalf of the county very soon, or it may be out already. For engineering and design services for the Gloucester NRG. And that is a three or $750,000 CDBG. And then there's also match. So that'll be great. We met, Hapcap met with some representatives of the land bank in Heritage Ohio, and we walked around Gloucester a couple of weeks ago. It's, it's, it's awesome to see interest in a lot of the small communities along the state route 13 corridor, not only in Athens County, north of us as well, up through Corning, which is also has, has a CDBG neighborhood revitalization grant occurring right now, that is over $750,000. But clear up into Shawnee as well. I know that's out of Athens County, but it's awesome to see this corridor receiving a lot of attention. And as it funnels a lot of people down into Athens County. So other than that, we've just been in the trenches of fighting the fight of providing services to the neediest households in our region. And we've had, ODSA has provided a lot of funding for rent and mortgage assistance. I'm sure a lot of people have seen some of our social media and press releases on that. So it's just been an overwhelmingly busy year and looking forward to coming out hopefully with caution and optimism and, and ready for another year. So it's about all I have really. So thank you for your time. If anybody has any questions about any housing and community development programs at Hapcap, I'm happy to answer those.
Thanks, Glenn. I, I think we, I, I think you're, we're scheduling a meeting with the city and a few people from Hapcap to talk about some of those housing issues as well coming out.
Looking forward to it.
Likewise. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Paul Isherwood, as long as we're on Hapcap.
Yeah. So I've just been continuing meeting with lots of different people from around the the community, getting a lot of different perspectives and input on broadband issues. I would say to anybody here that if you have any broadband questions or come across any broadband projects or concerns that you're aware of, if you would send them my way, it would be good to start compiling, you know, much more complete list of what is going on around the county. And tomorrow we have the first meeting of the Athens County Broadband Advisory Committee, which is starting to bring some, you know, key folks together to start planning and strategizing how we can take advantage of this sort of unique moment where everybody is aware of the issue of the digital divide and that there is hopefully some significant funding coming down the pipeline to help us really address that. And hopefully future regional planning commission meetings will can go smoother if we get that fixed.
Paul, I did notice, I think there was an article I was reading about the infrastructure bill that that's in, I don't think it's even been brought to the floor in Washington yet, but there is a some language in there that was going to help to make it easier for municipal, regional and co-ops to form broadband organizations. Treat it as infrastructure. So I thought that was exciting for our region.
Yeah, I think, I, I think there's a bit, a lot of pressure to realize that if we rely completely on big ISPs to take care of the issues that smaller regions of the country like ours may not look as economically advantageous to them. So what are the other solutions for regions of the country like ours to make sure that we don't get left out? And if we need to strive ahead and do things for ourselves, that we are in a position to do that. I think that's, it's really great that they're starting to actually pay attention and focus on solutions that will, you know, the parts of the country that desperately need, need real help on this rather than parts of the country where it's a much easier solution. So that, yeah, there's a lot of stuff in that bill. And there's also stuff they're talking about increased subsidies as well for, for people who can't afford to have, you know, a, a fast connection at the rates that we'd sort of typically look at. So that's what we're paying attention to a lot.
Hey Paul, can I make a comment on that too?
Yeah.
I don't know if the mayor was joking at the start of the meeting, but he mentioned a co-op and I wanted to bring that up as well. I'm glad you got.
I don't think he was joking.
Well, yeah, because we know that of that 100 billion that will be allotted to broadband expansion, it's going to private providers, municipalities and co-ops. And everyone on this call is well aware that even with monetary incentives, sometimes it's not enough for those service providers to run the lines because there's just no ROI. So I think it would be wise to explore other options, whether at the municipal level or a co-op, which we've seen work elsewhere in rural communities. So.
I know, I know AEP has been passing around as well, requests for letters of support. For, there's a state bill that would provide funding for unchanging rules for, to allow electric co-ops more access to providing services as well. And they've been, I think the commissioners got a request for letters of support. And I know commissioners in other counties in the area have also been getting from AEP for, for that. So the more and more people who are interested in getting involved and changing sort of the model of how internet services is offered. And the co-op offers a really interesting way because you've got a lot more local control, a lot more ownership of the actual components. So you, you're able to sort of have a stronger voice when you're talking about how much that's rate should be. So it's definitely, it's definitely a model that we should be, you know, taking a look at and seeing what can be done with it.
I agree a hundred percent. I think I'm on my third letter of support for, for AEP and various the House incentive bills.
Thanks, Paul. Molly, do you have anything else to, do you have anything to share?
Yeah, other than that, I was just going to share that, you know, we did participate, the EDC participated in ORCA's ARC power grant application, specifically some funding for opportunity zone technical assistance. So just hoping, hoping that that comes through. That would help prop up the opportunity zone funds in Chancie to really draw in investments around the Bailey's Trail along Stimson Avenue in the city of Athens, and then hopefully something in Albany as well.
County Commissioners, Chris or Lenny? I don't think Charlie's on here.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Um, let's see. We, the county voted to give ORCA $90,000 this week as a membership. So that's, that's new news. Also, we're having conversations about creating a full-time environmental deputy position. But we're also hoping that includes possibly working with the court system to develop an environmental court. So those are exciting things. We're going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony on April 20th at 1:00 PM at our new EMS station on Kenny Drive. So there'll be tours. And the interesting thing about that building, as we've looked at the costs, basically the, the added costs associated with insulating the envelope actually was completely offset by the, the smaller machines for the air handling and HVAC systems. So then we also have 46 kilowatts of solar on it. And so it's going to be close to a net zero energy building, but it's because we're heating with gas, we, we're not going to completely offset that, but it's going to be pretty close. And that's all I got. I'm up in Nelsonville getting ready to board up a land bank property.
Thanks, Chris. Charlie or Lenny, are you present? I know Lenny said he had an appointment. If not, we can move on to the Athens County Auditor, Ben Abfeld, still present?
Good morning, guys. I just, I don't have anything really to report. I do have, I guess, a comment, concern, question, maybe. It hasn't happened yet, but historically any property that is under five acres that is split or resurfaced within the three mile of the city has to go to city code. With the newly added zoning in the plains, how are we to handle those splits, resurveys in that area now? Do, do, do we need to present them to that planning zone board or still submit them to city code? Or how should we direct these, these surveyors, landowners in that regard?
I can answer that question, Paul. I did a little research on, trying to think of the exact section in the state code Title 7, about three mile planning jurisdiction. That extends out to where there is, traditionally we've just said there's no zoning outside the city, therefore, you know, the city takes that. Now here's the thing. The statute says that there has to be zoning in the entire township for it to be effective. So this is not entirely within the town. It's not the entire township. It's just a portion of the plains. And so my opinion would be that they would still, all the splits would still go through the code office or through the planning commission and city council. That's my reading. You know, I stayed at a Holiday Inn a couple of weekends ago too, and sometimes I play attorney, but that's the way I read it.
I, I agree with Steve on that as well. That's been our interpretation. And we've, we've, I think we've processed one or two then in that timeframe and unless somebody has alternative information to, to show us, I think we would just continue with that process.
You know, I think, I'll check and see. I think I might've sent the question to Kirk Shaw, who's our new assistant prosecutor for Township Affairs. I think I've sent that to him. If I haven't, I will do that. And so we can get an actual legal opinion on it.
Okay, that'd be great. I just, I want to cover the bases. So we're not fumbling around, looking like fools.
Steve, we have, we have been recommending, I know we, I had a conversation with somebody about a week or two ago, looking to do a lot split at the plains and there was going to be, create one newly created lot, but the existing lot had a home on it. And I did recommend that they double check with, with the township trustees. I wasn't sure who else to recommend to, just to make sure that they didn't have any setback issues that were going to come into play with that newly create with the existing lot and the home side yard setbacks or any of that. I wasn't sure. So we definitely want to coordinate a little bit more detail, I think, to make sure that we're not creating a problem with respect of the zoning ordinance.
Right. Boy, I'm trying to remember the guy's name. It was a property on Cross Street. Barely large. It didn't have enough road frontage to meet the road front requirements for both lots. I think the area was going to be okay. But my advice to the property owner was to ask for what you really want, not something that's going to make, make it look more, you know, conforming, you know, be practical with what you're actually putting down. Another question that I'd had, I believe it was the same property owner too, was the requirement to have an actual survey completed before you would have a proposal refused. The person didn't understand why they would have to pay a surveyor to have a survey done for something that could be refused. So I recommended to them that they just take a drawing, draw their own line on there, submit it to the code office and see what the reaction was. You know, I know, for example, in the past, the code offices years ago, if you had a commercial project, they wanted to see state approved building plans before you could submit an application for zoning clearance. Well, you could spend thousands on thousands of dollars for those approved plans and the state doesn't care, for example, if you have lighting or parking or landscaping. So I mean, that's, and don't get me wrong, that's a call that the city makes administratively. Each administration does that. However, you know, they choose to do that. So and there seems to be a lot of activity going on in the plains. I'm getting calls, you know, every few days about, do I need a permit for this or for that? Actually have our first application to install a single wide manufactured home in an R1 zone. The regulations are written such that if it meets the HUD requirements for a permanent foundation, the title's turned over to the auditor's office. You can place a single wide manufactured home in any residential district. So had been having discussions with the high manufactured homes commission and with the auditor about what those requirements are. So. And we need to work with that environmental court, environmental officer, the health department, the sheriff and the commissioners, because again, as I had mentioned, there's a lot of things that we have in common related to how people use property. So.
Hey Steve, can you send me a copy of those zoning regulations? You know, you talked about, you know, frunge and stuff like that. We, we get that question asked a lot. What's the minimum requirement for that? So.
Yeah. What I'll, what I'll do is I, Jill answered my question last night that I had sent her and she asked for the same information. So I'll send it to both of you.
Okay, fantastic.
Anything else, Ben?
That's all I got.
Thanks, Ben. Luke Salford, Luke? Anything else?
Yeah, one more thing real quick. Our public pricing program, which is where most of the government accounts and nonprofits, the main bundle for that, we're repricing right now. So if anybody's not currently in that, definitely now would be a great time to check it out.
Thank you, Luke. I thought I saw real quickly Mayor Renner from Chancie's face on here. Is she, is she present?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you. I have a lot of updates and sorry I had to leave the last meeting early. So these have kind of accumulated a bit, but we're paving nine streets this year in Chancie. So that's really exciting. We're getting ready to bid that project out. Yesterday we got ODNR's final project design for our park and the sidewalk they're putting in on Converse. They're also paving Fourth Street. And as Bob mentioned, the bikeway extension. So they're getting ready to start bidding that out this month as well. We are replacing a sewer main on 13, State Route 13 on Converse Street this year. And that's going to be a big traffic cluster because it's looking like we're going to have to close both lanes of traffic and we'll have to do a detour somewhere. So we're still kind of working out the best way to do that. And so I'll be in touch with what we, what we land on, but it'll certainly be disruptive to the traffic coming down 13. We are hopefully selecting an engineer tonight for our sewer line replacement project. It's really the project that is holding up economic development. Um, it's really the project that is holding up economic development efforts here in Chancy. So I'm trying to get the ball rolling on that, but um it's got a big price tag on it. So we're still trying to figure out, you know, feasibility of all of that and if we'll have to phase it. So um, just trying to line up funding. Um, we had our second meeting last night with the new Chancy Planning Commission, um, and we're sending a complete streets policy to council tonight, uh, which is pretty exciting. Um, they'll, they'll start working on the zoning code um the next meeting. So I'm always curious to hear what Steve has to say. Um, and the environmental officer does, it sounds exciting. So I'm interested to hear more about that as well. Um, we adopted a new floodplain management ordinance at our last council meeting, and uh that brings that into compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program.
Good, good.
Um, and so we are enforcing that accordingly. Um, have the new condemnation ordinance going to council tonight to uh start figuring out condemning the properties that were not eligible for the land bank, uh, the, the vacant uninhabitable properties here. So hoping that that'll be a great next step for us to continue cleaning up the village. Um, and we have a cleanup day scheduled for May 8th, which uh Dover Township also has the same um day scheduled for their cleanup as well. We usually do in years past a curbside pickup, but um we will just be placing dumpsters at our Texas, Texas Eastern facility on Plum Street. So um, that'll be from 9:00 A M to 12:00 P M on May 8th. And that's what I have.
Uh, let's see.
Paul, real fast.
Yes, man.
Um, I do have a, I guess, question for Amy. So I had a liquor control agent contact me the other day about um somebody trying to get a liquor permit to, I don't know if they're opening a bar or selling just a drive-through, whatever, is building right next to the train tracks. Um, and they, he'd stated that they couldn't issue it because it was in the floodplain. And there were, there were issues of some sort with that.
Um, yes, mm-hmm, that's correct.
So I guess, you know, are you back on FEMA's list of approved areas?
Um, no, so we, we haven't been reinstated into the NF I P, but regardless, we have the ordinance that, you know, shows that we're enforcing the standards. So a, and we never, didn't have an ordinance. We just updated our ordinance um to, to keep up with their um ever-changing standards. But yeah, the property you're talking about, we are contesting um that liquor license, because that, that building is not in compliance with the NF I P.
Okay. And that's what he was saying to me and I, and I kind of gave him some back history and, I mean, he understood completely and was, was fine with everything that you guys were doing. So.
Okay, cool. That's good to hear, because I haven't, I haven't heard from them yet. We submitted our letter, you know, saying that we were going to contest it. So.
Yeah. Very good. Thanks.
Uh, Warren, do you have anything additional this morning?
Nothing additional.
Okay. Uh, Jack Pepper, do you have anything additional this morning?
Negative.
Okay. Uh, Lauren Connor, do you have anything this morning?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Lauren. Uh, is there anybody else on this call for the good of the order that uh has anything additional to share?
Well, I know one thing.
Yes, Steve.
Um, May 8th is also the Athens Township Cleanup Day. We'll have um dumpsters at the Old Plains School Facility, now owned by Hopewell Health, but we've got the approval of Hopewell to put uh dumpsters there in May, Saturday, May the 8th. And also there will be dumpsters at the Richland Volunteer Fire Department Office on Hooper Road. And I want to remind everybody, too, that on May 15th, um, at the Athens County Fairgrounds will be the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District Recycling Day. Um, scrap metal will be um recycled and the cost forwarded to Habitat for Humanity um to help fund their building projects. And um it's your chance to get rid of tires, uh, computers, microwaves, any, about anything you can think of. Um, if you go to the um Solid Waste District website, Roger Bale, the coordinator, has posters, flyers up there that you can look at. And I've also got it posted at the township website, the information for that, May 15th. So it's kind of the ultimate day to get rid of things.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Uh, for the good of the order, any, any other comments from anybody? If not, we can um entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, the minute, the meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is scheduled for uh May 13th, 2021.